Counselor Moon. Nelson. All of you present as well as others in the audience. Take a moment of silence, please. Please join me in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Um, are we? Never mind. It's on here already.
It's on there already? Okay. We've got a couple of points on my mayor's report that we'll get to on the MPO and a few other little things. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as commended?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure it approved. Public comment period. Anything that anybody have for items not listed on the agenda? Okay, so we quickly, quickly into the zoning administrator's report. Lisa?
Yes, the zoning report is from, for activity from January 1st of 23 through today, March 14. Currently, a total of 58 homes are under construction or at the beginning stages of lot clearing. Fifty-seven of those are in the corporate limits and one in the ETJ. During this timeframe, 12 single-family resident applications were received and approved. Those, let's see, for 163 and 550 Grand Pines Vista, 263 Porterfield Lane, 180 Vista Ridge West, 209 Grand Pines Court West, those are all in Grand Pines, and then 54, 20, and 27 Forest Lake Drive, 3 Birdie Court, 3 Magnolia Circle, 10 Cardinal Drive, and a house at 73 Warsham Rock. Eight certificate of occupancy were issued. A home at Renwood Court, See Woodland Circle, Eagle Drive, another at Woodland, one on Hoffman, one on Richmond, one Renwood Court, and one on Pine Tree Terrace. There was one lot clearing permit approved, one structure modification, one deck, two swimming pool, five fence, four accessory structures, two propane tanks, and one permanent sign.
So what was the permanent sign?
That was for Wendy Ridge. This is for their development sign.
Gotcha, okay.
And that was it.
Anybody have questions?
Busy, busy.
Yeah.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay, Counselor McGregor, go ahead with the financial report.
Okay, report of cash balances. We have got a total between the water fund and the general fund, Total reserves of that are, let me go through each, each one. The balance in the general fund total is $2,709,394. Of that, $183,108 is reserved. In the water fund, we have a total of $1,322,492. And of that, $361,076 is in reserve. Now, total in the capital trust funds, just so we know. We currently have, between our water fund and our general fund, we now have $2.7 million. We added another $200,000 in the capital trust funds. So this month, the interest, let me see what she says. In February, we had a general fund interest of $6,173. And in the water fund, we earned $2,631. So almost, almost $8,700 a month, which is not too shabby.
Sure, we should start a shock stick in the eye.
So, right now, we currently have, in the general fund, almost $1,726,000 that's not reserved. And when we go through our budget, I think we should be upping our reserves in like the street fund, you know, the park fund and things like that. And in the water, in the water department, we have $900,000, $961,000 that's not reserved. And I think we should be putting that into some reserves, whether it's wells or whatever, in, in infrastructure reserves. But I think we should be putting a little bit more money into our reserves.
I agree.
And we can do that with our budget.
We can do that with a budget.
So that is, that is it. I don't think we're going to do any budget work.
No, we'll do a little search.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Nobody wants to see that.
Nobody wants to go through that. Except for us, right?
Yeah.
So that's, that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, did you? Thank you. Up next, Lieutenant Garner's going to give us an update. You know that guy?
Uh, yeah.
Come on up, LT.
Uh, not a lot to pass on. Contacted Elderton about a week and a half ago. Our car had just been shipped from Michigan, our new car. We should be seeing it anytime. We did sell Canine Maverick last week. We put a filler out about two months ago, I guess, with our master trainer, who I went through school with, who has a lot of connections with different departments. And last week, two departments, well, a department and a business contacted me. Rutherford County Sheriff's Office was interested in American Canine, which is located out of Molok, North Carolina, which is up near Dare County. They drove five hours down, demoed him for them, they purchased him on the spot. He is now gone. He is going to, as far as I know, as soon as he's done with his training with them, he is going to Miami to the Carnival port for the cruise ships.
Interesting.
And he will be checking all the cargo that's going onto the cruise ships for Norcox. As far as that, that's all I have to report.
Any questions, Lieutenant Garner?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the water department. Gary, Counselor was in.
Okay, I have a presentation today.
Yep.
And I apologize for screwing up with your neck there. I'm going to send it to you guys as well. So this has been, as a result of a couple of different issues that have come up, that have focused some attention that I wanted to share with you all as we are preparing for our budgets, as we're looking for infrastructure issues. So I'm, I'm going to kind of go into it this way. I'm going to start with an update first and say that the property, the Sackman property where we're hoping to put our next well in, we are still on deck with underwood drilling. They are very, very far behind in getting out to us to be able to give us the quote that we need to give them the okay to start the drilling. We continue to ask, Jesse continues to poke them, and we will, again, we're in line. They know we're waiting and hopefully, I'm not going to say, it should be in two weeks. I'm not going to say that at all, but that's what we're waiting on. We did discuss a minimum amount of water that we should expect if we're going to put a contingency offer. So in conferring with David, it was determined his recommendation would be no less than 27 gallons per minute. Any less than that than we would be able to, if, if they accept the contingency with those constraints on it, then that's what, that's what he's recommending.
It does seem low. Yeah.
That's, he's, he's expecting, well, you know, and of course, this is all what he, what he knows, but he's expecting at least 50 gallons per minute. He doesn't, but he did say 27 gallons per minute or above. That's his recommendation. We could change it.
I was just changing it.
We have to be a little, hold that margin a little higher, I think, so.
And certainly with, so that's his minimum. So I suppose we could set a, you know, 50 or whatever.
Maybe 40 gallon because.
I mean, that's money that, you know, depending on how much money we're paying for it, you know, that's probably one of our lower-producing wells, I would think.
Well, that's what I, do we know what our gas, our gallon per minute are at the other wells?
I don't, not off the top of my head.
I know the one we were looking at.
But they're high.
Was 37.
Yeah, they're high, yeah. Well, that was the one at the.
Oh, but your Sweeney's property.
Sweeney's property.
Right.
Yeah, that was 37. Well, that was what, no.
Was supposed to be 37.
Supposed to be 0.
But the two adjoining ones are, and again, I don't know their numbers, but they're high producers for sure. So the expectation, and I think that's probably what's driving David's expectation is because of the wells out there, that are about the same.
That would be very, very good, okay. We'll think about that, see, do we want, well, we'll talk about that. We'll talk about that. Okay.
Okay, so following up on my meeting that we had regarding the security status of our water infrastructure, all of the locks and doors that needed to be replaced and/or upgraded have been completed.
Awesome.
We had the electricians out yesterday, as a matter of fact. We needed to get some wiring done in order for us to get the over-the-door lighting. You'll, for those of you that drive around, Jesse did get two of them in. The one there off of Ridge Road is probably the easiest one. If you drive down the, drive down the road there at nighttime, you'll notice it's a real, it's a down-facing light. Again, being very concerned about light pollution and so forth. But the down-facing LED light is now functioning. It goes, it goes on at dusk and off at, at dawn. And it's, it's really, really nice. And you'll also notice, if you do drive by there, that Jesse has removed, there was all, not all, but you'll see a lot of the outside was eaten away and in really bad shape. So he's, he's replaced the exterior, but there's some roof work that needs to be done. And we have to go out for bid to get somebody to, to finish that part of it. The other thing was regarding the, and this is kind of related to where I'm going to go here in a minute. During the power, when we had the power outage, there were a couple of things that were brought to our attention in an unexpected way. And the one that I'm going to focus on today is in regards to the fact that when we have a well that goes down, there's no, we don't have any alerts. We don't have any sensors that would ascend, send something back, for example, to your iPhone. There is a sensor. The sensor, though, the David or Jesse would go to our pump house here below the big tower. And in there is an old monitoring system. So they would be able to go to the building, look across at the status lights and see if there was a problem. That's the only way. And it was during this awareness that we were having, again, during the power outage, that we realized that if, without somebody continuously monitoring that, it was, it was something that concerned us. So that's when Jesse got on a three-on, three-off schedule. So he would, after three hours, he'd go up, he'd check everything, and then he would go back home. In any case, there's a rather cheap upgrade to this system that is right around $1,500 that will give us exactly that. It's, it's, it is a system whereby if a pump goes down, you get an alert on your application, kind of what we all expect nowadays, an alert on the application, or anything that goes wrong within the monitoring system would alert him on a phone, as well as the, the manual search as well. In any case, one of the things that is required is that they need to put in a, they call it a flow sensor in the main line that comes in, so that if it's not moving, of course, you know, then they know that's an issue. So we had McFadden come out briefly to look at what that might take. And it was during that process that we realized that, one, for sure, on well number four, I think it is, it is so rusted out that you cannot, he would not be able to drill into it. And I, that then kind of got me focused on looking at those kind of things in terms of what, what, what does it look like in terms of what should we be thinking about as it relates to that? So I, I took some pictures, so I wanted to show you all what an upgrade looks like. This was done, I forget when it was on there, but I, I wish I could share. I think it was 2018 was this upgrade. And again, this is, this is, of course, what we probably all would close our eyes and assume that it looks like inside all of our pump houses. And, and if it were true, that's, again, that would make everybody sleep better. So anyhow, I wanted to show that to you before I got to this. So this is the beginning. This is well site number seven. This is what got me started on this whole adventure. When you touch that pipe, it literally just falls. Jesse has been tasked with keeping the areas clean, so it doesn't look so bad, which is good, he's doing his job. But it, it really just literally falls off like dandruff. This is a little bit bigger picture, closer picture of it. Again, you get a better idea of what we're talking about there. It, it literally is crusting from the outside. Now, David, I panicked and had David come out, take a look at it. And he said the interior walls are, are still functioning properly. There's no issues. He said, oh, that could probably last, well, at least my lifetime. However, again, unfortunately, McFadden is not going to be able to drill into that without compromising the pipe. And I am not comfortable with our pipe looking like that and as brittle as it is. This is to give you another, also, again, I took some pictures of this, the two worst wells. This is an electrical panel.
Well, Gary, just for, just for a second, I know a few, maybe months ago, we talked about, or in our last budget, we put in money for infrastructure. And I think we, I had suggested $100,000. I think we ended up with $50,000 because we thought, oh, no, our infrastructure is solid. And it's stuff like this that really, I think, we should be, you know, planning for. We have plenty of money to reserve for it, and we have plenty of money where we should be, we should, it's not just the pipes under the ground, you know? And, and, you know, if someone says, oh, the pipe's under the ground, it'll last, you know, another 50 years. Probably not, you know? And I think that's another thing we've got to, you know, reserve for, and we did reserve for. And this stuff is exactly what we should be fixing.
Exactly. And the conversation has begun in terms of what we're going to need to do to be able to get a feel for what are we talking about in terms of how much is this going to cost to replace? This actually is a picture of what used to be a big valve. That's all that's left of that.
Now, is this from the 70s or is it newer?
I don't know what the date on the, I would imagine it's probably in that earlier stages. Yeah, that's a good question. Coupler. This, this gives you an idea in terms of the nuts and bolts that's pulling those together. This is a manual valve. Self-explanatory. Coupler again, this one, coupler to the exterior. This is the primary pump, the primary line. And this is, again, this probably highlights it the most. You can literally see, I'm sorry, you can literally see where those bolts are, the metal is deteriorating.
Now, is it deteriorating because of chemicals that have been poured onto it or?
Yeah, the environment, the environment is very, very moist. We have, we have circulator fans, but only two of them are working. We've, we've got, since gotten those fixed. Mainly in the areas where we dispense chemicals is, is really where we need those. And that's where the primary, you know, if you look in some of those that aren't dispensing, it's fine. There's, there's no, no issues at all. And I don't want to give the impression that all of our wells are that way. These are two wells that, that, that are, I wanted to highlight for you as the worst.
And basically, they're chemical storage.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we, what we need to do is have them on a maintenance plan and just make sure we budget, because we have the money to do it, to get that stuff fixed, you know? And shouldn't be any question or problem about that by any means.
Yeah, I would hope not. But again, I wanted to share with you all, because, again, as the budget comes up, we're getting our bid, we're going to be getting our bids, but I, I think it'll be substantial. And I just want everybody to be ready for what that might, that might cost.
We could, very easily, we could put $100,000 in reserves and add it to the 50 that's already there with, with the money that we already have in the water department. So I think that.
Well, I'm reluctant to, you know, to empty out, empty out a coffer on, on one thing. But I get you if you need to do it.
I mean, we've got $900,000 in unreserved.
It's going to cost yet.
Yeah.
That's my point. We don't know what it's going to cost yet. But I, but anyhow, so, so what, what's happening right now? So we've got two electrical contractors, I'm sorry, one electrical contractor that's going to be appraising the junction boxes that I, or I'm sorry, the panels that I showed you, and also putting in our exterior lighting for our over-the-door stuff. McFadden estimate, again, this is the, the company that would be doing the installing of the switch for our updated system. And I'm going to ask him how much it would cost just to do the one pipe. Again, just because I want to make sure everybody has all the different estimates that we have. And of course, go out for bids and for repair, replace of the pipes and valves. So that's it. Just want to give everybody an opportunity to see that. And that's all I have.
Any more questions for Gary? Okay, we've got a few things to add here. I attended a meeting of the Metropolitan Planning Organization in Carthage last week. This is a organization put together by federal mandates. It includes Pinder's Aberdeen, Southern Pine, Whispering Pine, Taylor Town. But does not include us at this point. But it is a possibility that we will be involved in that. What they're doing is building a complete organization that will organize for this whole area transportation plans. You know, whether it's widening a road or doing whatever has to be done. Currently, Foxfire is involved with the rural planning organization, separate from the MPO. But there was some discussion at the meeting that the county could say, okay, we're all going to be in the MPO, which is the metropolitan, the whole metropolitan area. So we don't know when that's going to be. This is going to be a long and involved process, probably over many years. So it's something that this council and the next council, and probably the next council, will have to stay active in to make sure that our village is protected from what these other guys might want to do.
Yeah.
Particularly raised the issue about the Western Connector. For those of you who are around for the Western Connector fight, there was initial discussion about having it come through Hoffman, on Hoffman Road, and that was fought off. And we want to make sure that that doesn't rear its ugly head again when we're not there to protect ourselves.
Right.
So this will be something that we'll just have to watch. And I'll attend meetings as long as I'm around.
Just going to say, do we, how do we have, okay, I was just going to ask if there's a way for us to, it should be part of a normal process to go to those, right?
Correct, correct. Okay.
And, I'm sorry, not just to finish that part, just to finish that part of it out, so you don't miss anything. Are, are, do they shoot out an email or something to say?
They have a notifying meeting. That's how I get notification of the meeting.
Okay.
So I intended to sort of a watcher, to make sure they didn't do anything dumb to start with. But they seem, I mean, I talked with several people in DOT and they seemed pretty amenable to making sure we're protected. But, you know, we're all, yeah, that big and that big. Okay, another thing, I think all of us got involved in writing a couple of new procedures for the ARP money. And we found out today that we need to word it a little differently. And if you all had a chance, like, that we need to adopt it.
Whereas, already in the first part.
Yeah, and pardon the second part.
Yeah, there's a lot of policies that need to be updated. That even though we still have the policies, they don't contain all the words that the government wants to be. So the government has supplied templates, basically personnel policies, EEO policies, nondiscrimination policies that we already have, but have to be reworded.
Reworded to put those specific words in there. And we got this poison plate from our lawyer, so there's no, we're not reinventing the wheel.
Right.
Want to make sure we had approval to do that? Do we need to vote on that? Do we just have?
Uh, yes, we need to vote.
Okay, do we have a, a motion to accept this resolution?
Yes.
I'll make the resolution, or the, the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody in the audience wants to see it? I'll have it up here if you're really bored. Okay, get that? And I have the quit claim draft, and I think you all have that.
I don't think so.
You don't get that, okay. All right, we'll get you that.
I didn't see it.
The what?
The quit claim for Wedgewood.
It was emailed to everybody, was it not?
It was emailed to me, I mean, but.
I didn't print it. If it was, I did not print it.
I don't remember it going out to everybody. I remember, I remember reading the one with the changes.
And all we're doing is take, all we did from the original one was take out the easement for the water. Because we're not going to ask for a water easement on his property. Because that's all his personal property in there.
So once that's signed, then he'll send over to Bob and then he'll take the rest.
Yeah, but Bob, what I read in Brady's, Brady's email is if we're okay with this, he will send it to Mr. McTwain's lawyer.
Right.
So we all keep that then.
He'll take care of the recording as well.
Yeah.
He's willing to do that.
Okay, do we need to vote on that one then, too?
Nope.
Okay. Because that's already a done deal. All right. Done deal. Okay. That's all I've got for the mayor's report. I do have one, one more thing on the old business review of the after-action report. I put that in everybody's mail box for a big summary of the outage issues and the things that we found and the things that we should probably do better next time. So if you have any input on that, please let me know. I'll modify that and we'll make a memorandum for record and put that on our files for the next guy.
Good.
I have a question. Do we have, this is a terrible question to ask, but I know the town has, the village has a disaster recovery plan, correct?
We have as part of the county plan, yeah.
Okay, so we should probably just add this to the disaster recovery.
Yeah. Okay, next thing, an old business will be table 6.1. I know Lincoln was dying for that. Okay, I've got two different versions of this, and I'm kind of confused by it.
Ooh.
Yeah.
I only have one version.
You have the one without the initial zoning.
When did that go out, the CZ one?
Couple weeks ago.
That was sent to you guys. That was the one we reviewed.
That's what I thought.
It didn't have CZ on it.
The team didn't have CZ, you're right, did not have.
No, didn't. We've never had anything with CZ on it.
Did not have CZ. And one of the things that Janice and I found as we went through this, was your, your request to change the table to include nurseries was already in this version of 6.1.
Where? Under, under forestry and agriculture.
I just put it in there today.
Well, as, as it before.
It was on the old one, my old one, the one that you sent. Remember when I asked, when I asked you to send it to everybody?
Yeah.
And you said you did? This is the one I printed off, or that's the one I printed off.
That's the one that's on the website. Is that what you're saying?
No, this is the one, I don't know what's on the website. This is the one that you sent to us when I asked you to send it to everyone in the council. Like, maybe last week sometime?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Late last week. It might be helpful if you put dates on the bottom.
When I said that it's got a date and it has a date that it was modified and so I don't know if you guys aren't getting that, but in my copies, because I got like four thousand of them now, um, it's got, it's got the date it was modified.
It's, I know when we were doing the budget, it was helpful if we put the date at the bottom so we all knew as it was one of the footers, so we were all working off the same, off the same document.
Yeah, we had this document proposed.
Okay, wait a minute, that's the document, yeah, wait a minute, I put it in, now I'm, I'm tracking with you, that's the one that I made the changes to after we did the special meeting and I did put nursery and landscaping in there.
Yeah.
But this morning, planning and zoning formally recommended we put nursery and landscaping in there. So I put it in because.
Because we said we, we should put it in.
Did we talk about it?
I think so.
I'm almost positive we talked.
As long as, as long as it's there.
It's there.
How, how it's up there for RA and RA five, that's critical.
Yeah.
Yes, no, definitely.
Yeah, okay, good, good.
But can we go through this like page by page and just go through?
Do you want to do that?
No, we gotta get to the same one.
I, I'm gonna have, I, I, I really apologize, I am not prepared, I left that document at my house. I can certainly lean over the shoulder and go if we.
Why don't you go through it at the public hearing?
No, because I think, I think there's things that I want changed, I think shouldn't even go to the public hearing.
Yeah, we wanna have our ducks a little before it goes to the public hearing and then if we have to change anything, we'll know where we are. Which in fact is on here to do.
That's a public hearing?
Yeah.
But we don't know yet.
We're gonna, we're gonna set that, because we may have to do two based on physical time it takes to do it all.
Can, can I, are you ready to just?
Well, which one do you have? Which one does Mary have?
The one I'm looking at has proposed CZ on the column, that's the one that I made all the changes to after you guys did the special meeting.
That's this one, and this one does not have the nursery on it. That you passed out to it before.
It does not.
Does not. That's the one that had the red edge, red A's and all that stuff. Yeah, that's the one.
Right, but wait a minute, I sent you the, you emailed me, I updated it and sent it back out.
But it didn't have, the one I got that time around did not have CZ on it unless the column got cut off.
Maybe the column got cut off, because CZ is definitely on there.
Then maybe your print, maybe your print.
Well, it's, it's an Excel spreadsheet.
Field wipe.
So maybe your print area is.
I didn't print anything, I just emailed it. If you go into Excel and you send a sheet, the whole thing's gonna go, isn't it?
Yeah, hopefully you go with, you print it out, you got the, the printer and you gotta set it.
Let me see.
Because I did that and I shrunk it down, it's printed on one, one page as opposed to that.
Yeah.
Let me see.
Because it's got that additional column.
Well, well, okay.
Could we maybe, since we're not even sure if we're on the same document, and you postpone this to the next meeting?
Well, we gotta do this pretty soon.
Okay, all right, this one.
If you wanna send it to me, I'll go and print them. If you're wanting to belong with somebody else, send.
You'll probably have to change the print area to get the CZ in there.
Yeah, I'll check it.
And the one you're gonna be printing out now, Mary?
I'm not printing, wait a minute, I'm not printing anything, I'm sending the whole spreadsheet to Lisa and when I look at it, it, it's, it, trust me, proposed CZ was there.
Okay, does it have the nursery on it?
Yes, it does.
You're sending, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You just sent it?
Okay. This is getting confusing with so many additions.
Did you send that to just Lisa?
Yeah, I could've sent it.
She got printed, so.
Yeah, would you mind?
Yeah.
I don't have a hand on my phone.
Yeah, I think.
Read it all.
Yeah, it does have, it does have CZ, but it didn't print CZ.
Yeah.
Okay, that means when it was printed, whoever printed it didn't adjust the column.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then also.
Anybody else want an email copy of it? No, because it's already there, right?
You've got it, yeah.
You've got it. Hang on, Gary, I'll, I'll just send this to you and then you can, then you can play.
And this is an updated one from the one that I got on the ninth?
No.
It is the same.
It is the same.
Oh, I have that.
Do you have it then?
I do, yes.
You have CZ out there?
It'll come up on the page.
Far right. Yep, you got it.
Yeah. Okay, so Gary, you don't need it?
Nope, thanks, thank you.
I didn't even look at the CZ, but that's not the important part of it.
CZ is so simple.
Right.
But I do have a quick, a quick question, Mary, on retail sales or service and repair. You have auto sales and service and motorcycle sales and service and it's got a red X in it and it's in a red column, so maybe you didn't see it, but shouldn't those two be, I think we talked about deleting those two.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see the red X because.
It's red.
Yeah, hang on, I didn't make those go away.
And then automotive parts, for some reason we said we didn't want that and I don't know why.
I think we said we didn't want any of that, didn't we?
No parts stores.
On the auto parts repair, maintenance.
It was the repair that.
It's got a red X. Electric charging station has a red X.
No, electric charging station was okay.
And it's got a red X on it here.
No, it's got an A.
I made a poor color choice.
I need catheters.
So I, so I have deletion for auto sales and service, a deletion for motorcycle sales and service.
Correct.
A deletion for automotive parts.
Yes.
A deletion for automotive repair and maintenance.
Yes.
And then an allowable for the EV battery charger.
Yes, yes, okay.
All right, I can't tell the difference.
All right, I'm gonna change those right now.
Right now. And then under consumer goods, sales and service, we remove, or you, you, we, I don't know who, but computer and software was removed.
Yeah.
Was that intentional?
Yeah, because most of that stuff is downloads now.
Well, so if someone wanted to open up a computer repair place, it wouldn't be allowed? That's just a question, I'm not being.
It was, I will remember, what I remember of that conversation is it was, it was caught up with other things and I was one who said, no, let's, let's not, because we talked about the fact that it was just old technology, you know, that kind of stuff, it was gonna, it was gonna, it could potentially turn into just a, a dead store because of the technologies out today. So I do remember that conversation.
It's fine with me, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anything.
I think, I think at some point you're gonna have businesses come to us and we're probably gonna have to add some stuff back in.
You might.
I mean, but, but it's gonna be skinny to start.
Now, mail order or direct selling establishment, I think should be deleted.
What category are you in?
Um, consumer goods and sales and service, it's like halfway down. Mail order or direct sale, selling establishment?
I think we took that out.
But it's in, it's in the table.
I think we have to be careful, I think we have somebody doing that.
No, it's blank, it's blank all the way across.
It's blank, it's blank, I just did, I didn't delete the row.
I think we need to be careful because we have somebody doing that right now from their home.
That's, that's totally different than doing it in the business district, that's, that's a home business, that's totally different.
Okay.
Yeah.
And? Oh.
It is in a proposed CZ column, I don't know.
No, it'll go away, the whole thing will go away.
Gotcha.
Won't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And then cosmetic and beauty supplies and personal grooming products. We have it in a PUD, but not allowable in village business. Is there a reason, do we know why we wouldn't want that?
Well, again, from what I can recall, and I don't have a darn one that I need my notes on, but from what I recall, it was what, well, what do your notes say? But when we were talking about it, again, it was the same kind of argument discussion, not argument, discussion that we had regarding the software place and the thought was, let's, let's.
No, we did cross it off.
Why?
I don't know, I don't have any notes on it, but we crossed it off.
Okay.
Crossed it off, we crossed it off, but it's on the list though.
So the list was A.
No, it's in, in a PUD.
Beauty.
In a PUD.
But only in a PUD.
In a PUD, yeah.
I'm, I, I think what you, I listened after I lost a few, I just took the notes.
We, we, I had it crossed off like we didn't want it.
We could take it off the PUD then.
Not necessarily, because if somebody came in and let's say they wanted to do an optical store, they wanted to do a little grooming, you know, a little personal, you know, cosmetic thing and there were three or four of them like that, I mean, that would be nice, why not, and why not, why not allow it?
Part of the PUD, okay.
And it's, you're also gonna allow it in CZ because CZ covers every single zoning district, yeah.
Okay, all right, nevermind.
All right.
Good.
Probably the sixth, the sixth item down, it's right after real estate rentals and leasing. You have professional services.
There's one unit in a PUD, but scientific research and development services.
Do you have it, Mary?
What do you, what's it called?
Yeah, what are you looking for, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Under professional services.
Right, but what's the line item?
Oh, scientific research and development services.
Okay.
It's blank all the way across.
And allowable conditional zoning.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I don't have that one, okay.
Yeah, okay.
A darn CZ.
I know.
I don't, you know, but some of these, did, did we decide to just take that one out?
I can tell you, let me see, hold on.
I mean, I don't think it's a.
Shut it out.
In mine, it was crossed off.
All right.
Okay.
Got it.
Those are all the comments I had. Good.
And we got all mine.
Okay, that's it, okay. Now can, can you send that back to us again?
Yep.
So we have the final.
Yep.
This is revised, we'll call this revision thirty and the next one will be thirty one.
Back to my old speckery days.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, okay, any more questions, I think we're good to go and bring this up to the open hearing now, we need to do a, I got planning and zoning, has any other questions on six point one?
Nope.
Okay, then in the new business, P and Z board recommendations. We've already got, taking care of the one with the nursery.
Yeah, was there a resume in there?
Oh, what, no.
Okay, good, sure what you were looking for.
Where are the planning and zoning board recommendations? Do you have that?
I'm sorry?
You said, we're doing new business?
Yeah, we're going down, we got some kids, she just, Mary just sent some today and I thought that we made copies, didn't we make copies?
What did you send?
Conditional zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, I printed off, it shows an email.
Oh, it's an email.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the information's written, I'll state it as.
Adding, adding that dimensional standard in the definitions.
Pardon?
You're adding the definition in there, dimensional standards in the definition.
Yeah, in definitions, yeah.
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 And we already put that in there?
You want me to say a word or two about conditional zoning, so we, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty, it's pretty straightforward and I may be repeating myself a little bit, but it is the zoning process that most municipalities use now instead of a special use permit, okay? It's good for us because a special use permit, as you probably recall, is a quasi judicial hearing. Everybody who speaks raises their right hand, only stakeholders can participate, okay? Like you couldn't have somebody comment who wasn't involved in the special use permit, like, let's say, let's use the solar farm as an example, okay? Only people who have property adjacent to that solar farm would be considered stakeholders. So somebody in the village who had an opinion, uh-uh, at a special use permit, you cannot do that. The other thing about a special use permit is that it's a one-time shot. You don't get to table it because you need more info, okay? Conditional zoning gets us around all that and you may recall when Hornick did the intro for you guys, he kept coming back to them like, dang, we need to have that. So in a conditional zoning, people other than stakeholders can stand up, because it's, now it's a public hearing, okay? So now it's, it is an administrative procedure. So people can stand up and make comments about the proposed conditional use. It also means that if you got into something, you're like, you know what, we need to do some more research or, you know, or we're not ready to make a decision, you can table it and pick it up later, okay? I think it's, it's a real win for us. I did not send you the documents that Brady Hornick sent to me from 160D examples of that kind of thing, I will do that tonight when I get home, okay? Once you read through it, you'll go, makes sense. I'll give you a perfect example of where conditional zoning would have been a laydown for us and that's on Windy Ridge. Pinehurst used RS thirty conditional zoning when they did Winston Pines. In something like Windy Ridge, which really it doesn't have any mixed use, it doesn't have shares amenities, so it's not a good candidate for a PUD, but conditional zoning would, and we did these things anyway, but conditional zoning would have formalized an agreement between the council and the owner of the property, listing every single specific condition. So we would have listed all the conditions relative to the retention pond, we would have listed the conditions relative to vegetation around the water tower, we would have listed any conditions relative to the mailbox kiosk, stuff like that. So conditional zoning, as I said, I'll send you the supporting documentation tonight, but it very clearly says it needs to be applied to every zoning district, okay? It's not hard, I mean, what, what, we give you like a page and a half and, and we kinda cut and pasted some of that and then, you know, through, looked at, looked at some other things relative to Foxfire, so it's not, it's not really complicated. It just moves us out of special use hearings and puts things that maybe don't fit perfectly into a zoning district into a public hearing legislative mode, which I think for us would be really good. Makes sense?
Yeah, sounds good.
Is there, is there timeframes, you know, like on the conditional use permits, you know, once, once there's, once you stop doing that conditional use, the, it's, you can't do it again, you have to come back for another conditional use permit.
Well, this is conditional zoning, the special use permits are a little different.
There's no end to it?
No, because if you use it, like say if you had used it pointing the wrong direction on Windy Ridge.
Right, right.
There would be no reason to have it end.
Right.
Right?
But like the conditional zoning we had across the street.
That's a, that's a conditional use permit, that's totally different.
Right.
Because that's a quasi judicial, that conditional use permit technically, I think, Lisa, correct me if I'm, could be pulled by the council at any time.
Yes, okay.
Conditional zoning is totally, it's kinda like a tweener, like tween a single family house and having to do a PUD. I mean, it just gives you another administrative option to lay out conditions and quite frankly, because the property owner and the village council sign it and it lays out every single condition, there's no, oops, we forgot to do that kinda stuff, which I think, I, I think, I think it benefits us, is what I think. Don't ask me anything hard, I'm just kidding.
No, no, I just, it's probably a stupid question.
That's alright.
I'm trying to understand it, so like are there zoning districts that we designate?
This is an overlay.
So if I understand, then that would overlay every zoning.
It, it's gonna overlay every zoning district, okay? But it has, it's a special request made by a property owner to the village council after passing through, you know, the zoning administrator and planning the zoning. It, it comes as a, as a request from the property owner to put certain conditions on the development. It's where, it's where the village council and the property owner get, get together and if you wanna do this, well, you know, then we need you to do this. And I'm telling you, Winston Pines and Windy Ridge would be perfect examples of, are, perfect examples of conditional zoning.
So it's more for development?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, so this does not apply to a single family residence
No, 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 no.
within a zone, within a zoning district that wants to do something else.
No, no, this is more about development. This is more about, I wanna do something in the village business district and maybe I need, I need something just a little out of the norm, that kinda thing.
Okay.
Well, I think, where, where I think Gary's confused is it, it applies to all zoning, just like Windy Ridge is RS thirty, okay? But it's RS, it is RS thirty and they have to follow all the RS thirty rules, but then there's other things that we wanted them to do.
Right, it's like, we don't have any other place that has a retention pond. We don't have any other place where, well, the guardrail, you know, the guardrails, stuff, stuff like that.
Okay.
Somebody, okay, look, somebody.
And I, I really, and I'm, I'm okay with your answers, I haven't read this really yet, so, real quick. So what you're saying then is it's just for.
It would be a development thing.
And, and does that say that here? In other words, when, because you confused when you said overlay, because overlay, again, that implies to me that's all of the zoning districts.
Well, it's all of the zoning districts, but let me give you an example. A builder, I don't think, could come to us and say, we wanna conditionally build an RS thirty house.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Maybe not that, but are there, I mean, what, are there other things that they, I mean, again, I haven't dug into this yet, but is there other things that he said, well, I, I wanna build a, a structure here, but it's, even though it does not fall within the specs that we have today within our zoning, but I wanna conditionally zone
You just say no.
to allow for that border.
No, you just say no.
Well, okay, and that makes sense to me, I'm wondering, so with that, if a resident has that kind of latitude, granted, we're gonna say no, but this gives them now the opportunity to come in and present to Lisa a proposal based on CZ that I wanted to leak to my residents.
When, when I send you the supporting documentation, it's very clear that CZ applies, needs to be applied in all zoning districts because we weren't gonna put it in certain districts. My first roughs of CZ didn't have it everywhere and then we dug in a little more to what Brady had sent us and it's pretty clear that it applies in all zoning districts.
Okay.
But an individual isn't gonna come to you and say, I, I, I can't, I mean, it, it would just be no. But this is like if someone comes with some kind of a development and again, I hate to keep referring to Windy Ridge. Pineland Preserve would have been another good one for something like that.
And again, I, I, that makes perfect sense to me, what you just said. But the, because they did that broad bro, brush stroke, they could do it over, they overlay it on all the districts, because it sounds to me like you.
It has to be available to all districts.
Sounds to me like you were thinking the same lines that I was, well, why would we put this into RS, you know, twenty or whatever, why, we, we wouldn't. But then you found out that we have to.
When you, when you.
So by doing that.
When you read it, it's gonna make sense to you. Because, okay, look, like, let's say, when, when, wait a minute, but, so, all I want you to do is include that in the public hearing because that wraps the whole package together. It means the entire table is gonna be complete.
Okay, if we, if we wrap it into the pub, and, and again, I'm new at this, so if, if we, if it makes it to the public hearing, then what we're saying as a council is this is what we are recommending, right, and the CZ.
Yeah.
Right?
You don't wanna.
But I'm not too sure I have to recommend it yet.
You're not, you're, Gary, you're over complicating it.
Okay.
I, I, and I'm gonna be disrespectful, you're, you're, you're over complicating it. When Windy Ridge came to us, for examples, and they were an RS forty, conditional, I'm telling you, conditional zoning would have been perfect in that situation.
Sure, absolutely.
When a builder comes to us or comes to Lisa with building plans, there's no option on a single family home to do a conditional zoning. This is more of a development kind of thing.
Okay.
Because the conditions for building a single family home are very, very straightforward. There's no, like, you couldn't come in and say, well, I'd like to conditionally zone my property, so I only have to have a ten-foot rear setback. Well, the answer's gonna be, no.
Right.
But if the builder came in and maybe there was a part of the property that maybe had wetlands or something that was gonna make the build a little more complicated and they came to us and said, we'd like to conditionally zone this and here's why, and they laid out, you know, the conditions maybe relating to wetlands or something like that, that's totally different than an individual.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this is just a nice, it's a nice thing for us to have, so we're not always stuck in a special use permit or pushed into a PUD when we really don't need it.
Yeah, and like I said, I absolutely onboard understand the development.
Supporting stuff, which I sent this morning, it will make more sense. And if you still have questions, just get up with me.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, just now we need to talk about setting up some, uh, call for a public hearing. And based on the volumes and things and the, and the complexity of some of these, uh, it looks like we may be looking at two different dates just because of the amount of work that Lisa has to do to mail everybody on the RA five. Probably.
So this is the public hearing specific to table six point.
Well, this is.
No.
Which, which, okay, so refresh me, what are we, public hearing?
We're doing public hearings on several things. And the RF.
Two hundred.
Two hundred going from twenty acres to ten acre minimums. Changing the approval level
Process for subdivisions.
for subdivisions to the village instead of the P and Z, the village council.
Okay, remember that one, okay.
And the third one.
The table.
The table six point one, then the RA five.
Okay, so that table is in there.
Yeah, yeah, that is one of the, one of the issues.
Who said no?
No, I was gonna say, um, you know how we're going through the definitions as well and we may have changes to some definitions in the UDO?
I gave you a couple to change.
Right, and I think, um, there could be a couple others to change because we haven't gone through them and I know there's one that we definitely wanna change.
Which I wanna add.
No, we wanna, the one for driveway, it's a definition of driveway that's got some, um, language that I think is problematic.
Okay.
Um, but do we have to, do, we will have to list every single definition that we want to change or can we just list?
Any of the, yeah.
Yes?
On the ordinance amendment that I'll draft up, all the changes. Unless it's a, a flat where you're, you're completely wiping a whole section out and replacing with something else, it's much, but it, I don't know how many will change. Is it all?
I don't know, I haven't, I haven't started going through them, I have to. Now, when do you have to, when do you have to have all the information?
I have to have everything drafted up in, in ordinance form, a draft form for public inspection when the public notice runs in the newspaper. And any zoning change is required, two notices in the newspaper, um, consecutive weeks. And if we have the public hearings at our regular meeting on April eleventh, I need to run two ads. One would be Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of March and April fifth, so that means I have to have everything ready in, in draft form by March twenty-ninth. Now, that's for all, everything with the exception of the RA five rezoning, which is pretty extensive. Mary's helping me out with that.
Yes, we're gonna, yeah. I think we need to do table six point one and the RA five at the same time.
Okay.
Because, because they're, they're, they're linked together. So if we set those two and we have to set them out for four weeks and then we take everything else and do it in April, that, I think that would make sense.
Yeah, that cleans it.
The other ones are simple.
Yes.
If we can get the ad, the ads, that's no problem, it's getting drafted in the ordinance amendments, but the others are.
Two, two public hearings?
Yeah, because planning and zoning, I already have a spreadsheet list of all the lots, we did it when we went at RA five two or three years ago. So planning and zoning already has a spreadsheet, so we said, we would go to the tax records and put down the addresses and then give that to Lisa so she doesn't need to spend the next forty-eight hours trying to do it, because we're already in, I mean, I think it'd be fairly easy for us to do and it's good for the new planning and zoning guys to learn the Moore County site.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, thank you.
So if we want to change definitions in the UDO, that would be a different meeting for the same meeting?
We should be able to do that.
We could do that on April eleventh.
Yeah, we can do that.
That would be a simple.
And when do we have to have the proposed changes?
Right, I, I would need them.
You could do the definitions at the second one though, too.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, the definitions, if we wanna really go through the definitions, maybe do the definitions at the second one. Take the real easy stuff and knock it out.
Yeah, that table is important to get.
RF two hundred, that, those two are a lay down and then do the next one either at a special meeting. I'm a little anxious to get RA five in that table locked before somebody frisbees us something we don't really wanna have to deal with.
April eleventh, we'd be looking at the, at the first of the open hearings, one would be looking at the second one. Give you the time, you need to contact everybody.
The, uh, the following week, anytime, or the week of the twenty-fourth, we did something the twenty-fifth, two weeks later.
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
And why don't we do that, it's the second meeting?
And that's for table six point one, the RA five rezoning and for definitions.
Yeah.
And conditional zoning.
Yeah, that, get that part of the other part.
We'll get it all, that fits right in there.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what date you did, Tuesday twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-fifth, Tuesday the twenty-fifth.
So just for, I've never been involved in one of these before, so, uh, the second hearing, the second public hearing we're talking about is simply to give another, uh, opportunity for, for people to come? Or, or what is the second one for? Is it, is it?
Both open hearings are to allow public comment.
But they're for different items.
Different items.
Oh, okay, for some reason I thought what we did on the eleventh, we had to do.
No.
Yeah, okay, so you're just, okay, the next one will be the twenty-fifth.
So on the eleventh, we're doing six dot one and RF two hundred. Table six dot one.
No.
No.
No, you're doing, do table six point one with RA five.
Yeah.
So you're doing RF two hundred.
Twenty-fifth, I thought.
On the twenty.
The RF two hundred and the, um, subdivision.
Division.
Would be, and those, I already have all the information I could draft in the ordinance tomorrow.
Those are, those are.
So, yeah.
Is, um, is it in addition to the regular council meeting or is it part of?
Typically, we do the, the public hearings right before the regular meeting, yeah. But with that special one, did you wanna do that at four thirty as well?
Might as well.
Cause I wanted to get some people, so.
Four thirty. I have it on my computer.
Yeah, it's on the calendar, right there.
Put it right in, I mentioned, probably had some extra time for that one.
Maybe I can go through the definitions and have something ready for our work session.
Yeah, that'd be, we could plug that in, what's up? Budget. Okay, are we all set?
I'm good.
Good, everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good with the open hearing, public hearing. Okay, uh, public comment period for anything that was listed on the agenda. Anyone like to have anything? Nope, alright, now you get a motion to recess the, uh, regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
My favor?
Right.